Welcome everyone to Lincoln City Council Meeting for Monday, March 8th, 2021. Please note that in the rear of the room is our open meeting act that's posted by the northwest door. Let us all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a brief period of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the order of business of the city council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda in a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward. After that clerk reads that item. The applicant and those in favor should speak first, then those opposed. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating their name, address, and whether you are speaking in favor or in opposition to the item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. And after all the public hearings, the council will vote on the resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last Mondays today, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue that's not on the agenda for this date nor plan for a future agenda. Will the clerk please call the first item of business?
First, just an announcement. If you wish to be here in person on an item on the agenda, you may come to the County City Building, 555 South 10th Street. Limited seating is available in the council chambers. Testifiers are asked to wait in the Bill Luxford Studio or the hallway until your item is called. Then you can enter the council chambers and come to the podium. After you have finished speaking, you can exit the chambers through the door to your immediate left. First up, we have public hearing consent agenda, sections one and two.
Does anybody here would like to come forward to speak on items one, A, B, C, D, or E, or items two, A, B, and C? Nobody waiting? Okay, we can move on.
We will vote on item one A. It's approving the on-call professional task force agreement between the city and Olson to provide environmental services for the Adams Street 36 to 49 rehab project introduced by Washington.
So moved second?
Moved in second by councilperson Ward. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Cho?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Next up, we have two A. It's a setting the hearing date for a liquor item. I do need someone to introduce that.
So moved, Washington?
It moved by councilperson Washington and seconded by councilperson Ward.
Roy threw us off, didn't he? That's Roy's fault.
Any comments or questions about setting the hearing date? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Cho?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
Okay, we got through those. So we move on to public hearing liquor resolutions. Call the first item?
First, we have four A. It's the application of the Bar at the Yard LLC doing business as Longwells for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 140 feet by 20 feet at 350 Canopy Street, Suite 100 on March 9th, 2021 through March 13th, 2021.
Councilperson Washington?
Mr. Chair, I've been informed that Eric Marsh and Longwells will not be submitting this application and they can be, it can be withdrawn from agenda.
So the motion to withdraw four A?
Second.
Been moved in second by councilperson Ward. Any comments or questions or thoughts? Okay, seeing none, please call the roll.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Cho?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Next up, we have items four, B, and C. It's the application of D and E Greens LLC doing business as Adventure Golf Center for a Class I liquor license located at 5901 South 56th Street and the related manager application of Dylan Bulkey.
Is there anybody here that would like to come forward? Please, come on up. You Mr. Bulkey?
I'm not actually. I'm his business partner, Eric Gustafson. He is out in California shooting for a television show, actually.
Just have to take the oath. So if you could raise your right hand, do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth?
I do.
Okay.
Or yes. I just got married, so I'm used to saying I do. Okay, can I go?
Yeah, please do.
So I'm Eric. I own Adventure Golf Center with Dylan Bulkey, again, who is out of town right now. So I'm representing our business. And our application is for a liquor license for our premises to serve alcohol for consumption on our property, not to be sold and taken elsewhere. Our desire for that is not to be a destination for purchasing alcohol, but just as an addition to the services that we provide, something that would be akin to what you see at full-scale golf courses. And so as we've done our research and looked into things, we've been speaking with investigator Parker, who's been helping us understand exactly what needs to happen and what needs to be done in order to do that in a safe manner. Both Dylan and myself, growing up in Lincoln and being in the University of Nebraska, we've seen a lot of the negative effects of alcohol on a lot of our peers, and it's something we feel passionately about to not take advantage of, and we take that responsibility seriously. And, yeah, so we have a plan in place to do that as appropriately as we can. For instance, we'll be monitoring the amount of alcohol people can intake. And we're also aware as well that many see Adventure Golf Center, a miniature golf course, as a family-friendly environment. And there may be some who would have some questions about our choice to do that. In response to hopefully accommodate those people, we are having one of our courses be alcohol-free so that there will be at least one area specifically where there will not be any alcohol. And we'll be providing, excuse me, that alcohol only on a designated course during specific times. And those times will most likely just be weekend evenings, no daytime service of alcohol. Other notes that I have, we are looking into getting wristbands enabled as a way to identify. And we've also reached out to other businesses in the city. Kraft Axe Throwing being one of them on how they monitor their alcohol consumption. They said they started with a two-drink limit and have since limited it to just the bartender's discretion. And so as we've talked, we still haven't come to a final consensus on what that'll look like. But we do or will require that somebody play a round of golf to purchase alcohol. And we've considered also having a limit of one or two drinks per round in order to mitigate any chance for intoxication. It is an open-air business, and so it's outdoors as well. We only have one entrance to our facility, which makes monitoring a lot more manageable. And I think, I'm sure I'm forgetting a lot of things, but those are kind of the first initial comments I have. If you'd like to ask any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Do we have any questions for, yes, Ms. Washington?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks for coming down and explaining and giving us such a thorough presentation beforehand. I am a regular customer. And so I have, I'm glad to hear that you're going to keep one course available alcohol-free. But because we have bets going on in my family about who, you know, how, who, how well each of us play, I'd like to know, will you change the course on, regularly so that it would switch from course to course, or will we only be playing the one course?
Oh, sorry, you're saying would we switch the course that is allowing alcohol?
Yeah, so that we have an opportunity to...
That is, to be honest, that's not something we've talked about. It's something we certainly could consider. I think the logistical thing we would have to consider is how we would let our customers know. I'm sure the regular customers who would enjoy a drink would not just want to be relegated to one of our courses. We do also have plans right now to expand to a third course. That would be a championship-style course that's a bit more tailored to the competitive golfer, kind of bridging the gap between full swing golf and miniature golf. And so with that plan also comes our hope of drawing that specific crowd into miniature golf and not as much to the novelty of miniature golf as much as the competition. Dylan and myself, we both, we both love miniature golf and we're best friends, but when we're playing together, we're fierce. So I understand, I understand the competitive feel, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Eric? Do you have a bear cart?
Who knew?
Will you have a bear cart? No, just kidding.
Yeah, we don't have golf carts either. The only thing I can offer is my shoulders.
Any other questions? No. Thank you for coming down. Really appreciate it.
Thanks for your time.
Council retreat. We need a council retreat.
Council retreat, yeah.
For the golf course.
Oh, she's too good. She's competitive. Okay, let's go ahead and vote on our liquor resolutions.
I move approval of, Mr. Chair, I move approval of items four, B, and four, C.
Second. Been moved in second by councilperson Cho. We approve four, B, and four, C. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, please call the roll. Oh, is there anybody else that would like to come forward, speaking of that? I didn't see anybody, but thought I would ask. Okay.
These are items four, B, and C.
Right, four.
Okay, go ahead and call the roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Cho?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
Good luck. Okay, let's move on to number six. Public hearing and ordinance is second reading.
How about number five?
Actually, we have a public hearing resolutions.
Miss one?
Item 5A is amending Article 9 of the Bylaws of the Veterans Memorial Garden Advisory Council relating to city council consent to approval for amending the Veterans Memorial Garden Advisory Council bylaws.
Director Johnson, thank you for coming down.
Absolutely. Good afternoon. Lynn Johnson with Lincoln Parks and Recreation. The action for the city council this afternoon is an amendment to the bylaws for the Veterans Memorial Garden Advisory Council, really eliminating the provision that requires the city council to approve any amendments to those bylaws. And I'll explain a little bit of the background behind this because I do think this is a little bit perhaps unusual. You may know that in 1989, the Traveling Vietnam War Memorial was in Anlo Park next to, or just east of Old Pavilion. I think it created a lot of interest at that time in creating a Veterans Memorial Garden. And by 2000, pardon me, by 1991, there was a Veterans Memorial Garden in place at that location. There were a couple of different groups who then formed around and were very interested in the ongoing development of that garden. One of those was a group that was called the Veterans Memorial Garden, pardon me, Committee. And then in 1995, there was the Veterans Memorial Garden Advisory Board that was formally established by resolution. By about 2001, there unfortunately was some kind of some ranker and some discord among the people that were associated with that. And really by, by about 2001, the advisory board had disbanded and was no longer active. And so what we did was we, we went through mediated a process of getting all the interested parties together. And out of that process came the bylaws for the Veterans Memorial Garden Advisory Council. And those bylaws were adopted by resolution number, excuse me, 81803 in November of 2002. And in Article 9, there is the provision that the bylaws are required to be, any amendments to the bylaws are required to be approved by the city council. And I would tell you, at that time, it really, I think, was a failsafe measure. It was a way for the city, the city council, to continue to have some, some ongoing involvement and really perhaps some control over those bylaws. Twenty years has passed now. We have a very active and I think well-functioning 11-member advisory board. They're actively involved in providing advice and guidance about improvements to the garden and the management of the garden. They're also involved in working on preparing the five events that happen in the garden every year. The, there have been a handful of amendments that have happened to the bylaws to the Veterans Memorial Garden Advisory Council. All of those have been approved by the city council. Back in September, the Veterans Memorial Garden Advisory Council voted to make a recommendation to the city council to remove that provision that required the city council to approve their bylaws. And staff support that at this point. We feel like the group, excuse me, is well-established and is well-functioning. We did some looking into other city advisory boards and committees. And one of the things that we found is that this seems to be unusual. The guidance that is given to at least a majority, we couldn't find any that are similar to this. But the guidance that is provided for those groups is they're able to select and elect their own officers and adopt their own rules. And so this is different from, from really the rest of the city advisory boards and committees. So I guess my recommendation, I think, to the Veterans Memorial Garden Advisory Council's recommendation is that after 20 years and after going through the process of really re-establishing a very solid, well-functioning board, that this provision is no longer needed. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Do we have any questions for Director Johnson? It's an advisory board, correct?
It is, yeah.
And do they advise to the Parks and Rec Board? Would be their oversee?
Actually, there's, they're independent, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. They're, they're advisory to the department, the mayor, and the city council.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none? Is there anybody else that would like to come forward to speak on this item at this point? Nobody else out there? Okay. We can move on.
We can...
Somebody want to move? Do we, have we?
Do we need a motion to accept?
No, we can vote on this item. Again, it's amending Article 9 of the Bylaws of the Veterans Memorial Garden Advisory Council relating to city council consent to approval for amending the Veterans Memorial Garden Advisory Council bylaws introduced by Washington.
Here we are.
So moved second?
Moved in second by councilperson Raybold. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Cho?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
Now we can move on to number six.
Up next is our public hearing ordinances, second reading and related resolutions. Calling six A and six B together. Six A is the annexation 21001, application of Southwest Folsom Development LLC to annex approximately 41.33 acres of property generally located at the southwest corner of West Old Chaney Road and West Folsom Street. And the related change of zone 21001, again, application of Southwest Folsom Development LLC for a change from AG Agricultural District to R3 Residential District on property generally located at the southwest corner of West Old Chaney Road and West Folsom Street.
Good afternoon, Mr. Marshall.
Good afternoon. So I'm here on behalf of Southwest Village LLC. This is a development that has been doing a phase annexation and zoning as, as development continues through, through the progress they're making out there. So pretty straightforward. It's just the next, which will end up being the next two phases of the development. It'll bring on approximately about another 100 lots. And as you can see here, this is the area, southwest corner of Old Chaney and South Folsom, AG to R3, following the layout of the preliminary plat. Like I said, it is bringing on single-family lots that had been approved with the preliminary plat and just opening the next phase of development. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Marshall? Nope. Seeing none. Is there anybody else that would like to come forward and speak on this item today? Six A or six B? Okay, seeing none, we move on. And I have a feeling you're gonna step right back up.
Next up is item 6C, change of zone 07060C, application of Lincoln Federal Bancorp to revise the site plan for Wilderness Heights Plan Unit Development to allow residential, office, and commercial uses with associated waivers on property generally located at South 40th Street and Yankee Hill Road.
Okay. So I'm here on behalf of Lincoln Federal Bancorp. Wilderness Heights is a development on the southeast corner of Yankee Hill Road and South 40th. This has been, this is a, excuse me, a PUD, actually, Plan New Development that has been previously approved. We're coming forward with just a couple of changes, and I'll walk you through those. So first, the, the single-family, which is really on the, I'll call it the half, the south half, really internal to the development. We've increased the density of those lots. Originally, when this was done, I mean, originally, this was done in about 2006, the very first time that was preliminary platted. Again, it was updated in 2015 and 18, but we are changing these to more standard-sized lots. They were a little bit bigger. And the development, as we continue to progress and start seeing what the market may be, we're just refining that a little bit more. So it's adding approximately 60 units in density for the single-family. I think this plan actually changes at about 30, but it follows that R3 zone, if you will. And then in the, the B2 area, which is, which is kind of the Hohency and everything north to Yankee Hill Road, we are changing, I was here a couple of weeks ago, for Wilderness Creek, which is the west side of 40th, where we were changing some of the space to multifamily, as is the case here. We are taking some of the B2 area, we're showing multifamily layout and a bulk of where we were showing some mid-size commercial buildings and parking lots. And now showing approximately, we're asking for additional 200, or excuse me, six, okay, this number, 460 units there. There's 500 units that are already approved along the 40th Street side down there. And we're basically adding multifamily and approved dwelling uses in the B2 area. It is, you can kind of see this hatched area along Yankee Hill Road outside of the PPA, Pipeline Planning Area. And so we'll still carry commercial along that frontage and be particular to the uses that are approved there. Lastly, I'll just go over, there is water quality that we're kind of transitioning from the property to another parcel. We've been working with watershed on, kind of using alternate methodology for approval of those water quality credits for the development. And then there are a couple of waivers. We are extending the height waiver, surprise, surprise. This was approved for the height waiver in the R5 area, as I This was approved for the height waiver in the R5 area, as I mentioned, the 500 units on the South 40th Street side, and applying that to the B2 where there would be residential units. Also, block length waivers, there's a couple through here. We worked through a couple of scenarios as we were making these plan changes with Planning Department and came to an agreement on how to really allow better circulation of pedestrian traffic through here. So from 44th, basically, all the way, kind of extending through the development, there is a path that bisects most of these lots. So actually, there will be a pedestrian easement located on the commercial lot extending from Yankee Hill Road to Hohensie, and then it will start cutting through the residential development. And where it gets to this street, and then it will, this one's short enough that didn't really need a dedicated outlot through it. And then there is a planned park at this location, so people could walk there a little bit more easily. Think that pretty much covers everything as far as the waivers are concerned. And so I'll take any questions at this time.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Marshall? Right now, there are currently no homes next to any of these?
Correct.
And they haven't been sold, the home lots?
Nope. This is a little bit easier than when I was here for Creek, where there are homes across the drainage way and so forth. The homes that we presented the very first plan to are, you know, there's nothing built within this development. It is still adjacent to acreages on the east, and there's Tower, or excuse me, Tower Heights, which is situated right here. That is also owned by Lincoln Federal Bank Corp., is planned for townhome and commercial development, and then acreage is the east, and then, of course, the Chateau project across the street.
And what is to the south? Is that the church?
That is, that is Southwood Lutheran, and then Grandale, property that is owned by Mr. Sampson to the south, would be to the south, would be planned R3 residential development as well.
And 40th, 48th is where?
So 40th, so 40th, right in the center of this property would be 44th Street, and 48th would be the eastern edge.
And those are both intersections that are being changed at this point, right?
Plan. The plan is that the design is underway and will hopefully have this project bid out this spring and underway under construction for the remainder of the 2021 year. So we are, as part of this project and Chateau, we have that agreement for arterial road improvements from 40 to 48th Street, which would add roundabouts at 44th Street and 48th. And then also, just a note, you kind of gone out there recently, ran into some construction, closed roadways, there's the roundabout under construction at the Half Mile, which is relatively part of this development, 50% here, and then Wilderness Commons across the street on the west side is participating in the construction of that roundabout at this time. So a whole lot of improvements.
Councilperson Washington?
I do have a question. It's, thank you for, like, finally pointing down to the south end of the map. Can you tell me a little bit about the park, that land that is being set aside there? Is that going to be deeded over to the city for park, or is this sort of a homeowners' association park? And then with the addition of the multifamily housing, how many units in total will be relying on this park?
That's a good question. So there's approximately about, I think there's about 250 units. Single-family, 500 apartments here, and then another 460 in here. So you do the math, you're around 1,100, 1,200 units within this development itself. As far as I know, this is going to be a Parks, Park, Pocket, Park. So that would, I can't say that I have knowledge of how that actually gets, if it's Parks that purchase that with impact fees from the developer, or if that's then deeded to this, it's just, I guess I don't know, I don't go that deep into my knowledge of how that's actually set up with the city, but we had.
And this is a pocket park, you said? So what's the acreage there?
So I believe it's just a little over half an acre. Let me see if I can, from the size of it, I think it's just, it's probably about a half acre.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. This is something that we originally had, starting with a 2015 plan. It has just, there was, on the previous plan, the park was one lot over.
Okay.
With this plan, there was an isolated single-family lot. We thought, instead of having two families on each side of the park, then we just moved the park over just a little bit so that it was, then could be open to, and this open space, this is a detention area here, so that it will be open. It'll be a dry detention.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Any other questions? Yes, Councilperson Raybold.
Yes, Brad. So at the corner of 40th and Yankee Hill, which would be on the north side, that's a lighted intersection.
Yes, it is.
And then on the south side of this development on 40th Street, that's going to be a roundabout, right? What you had, right where your finger was there, that's going to be a roundabout?
Yes.
And then is that Hohensee Drive in the middle with a roundabout?
So Hohensie is here.
Okay.
And that is planned to be a signalized intersection. So we kind of got caught in the world of signalized to roundabouts, right here at 40th and Yankee Hill. And so when we, when we looked at this originally, this was kind of the separating, actually, when we went back to 2015, 44th was going to be signalized as well. And then when we revisited that, when Lincoln on the Move funds and the sales tax was approved, and we elected to go to and showed that it could function as a roundabout there at that location. So Hohensie still planned as a signalized intersection, and we have triggers for that to be signalized at the time of so much development in the commercial area.
So who's responsibility on, will it become the developer's responsibility when those triggers are hit to pay for the signalized intersection, or are they anticipating the city to pay for the signalized intersection?
I can't say with 100%. I know it's in the annexation agreement for this development, and that was previously agreed upon. I do believe, I'm trying to remember exactly how that went. I think that, I think that is a, maybe a development-related cost. I'm sorry, I just can't say that with a whole lot of confidence. But it is, the responsibilities are into the annexation agreement, though.
Could you find that out and just send an email to Council Pickett?
I can do that.
That would be great. Thank you.
I can do that. No problem.
Any other questions for Mr. Marshall? Is there anybody else that'd like to come forward to speak on this item? Seeing none? We can move on.
Thank you.
That ends our public hearing. We have resolutions, first reading, items 7A through 7E. Ordinances, first reading, items 8A through 8C. Pending list date certain. We are going to have public hearing in action on that next week. And then our pending list is 10A through 10F.
Councilperson Ward?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to move to, move items 10D, 10E, and 10F and related resolutions to third reading for April 5, 2021.
Second?
It moved in second by Councilperson Raybold. And we move those to April 5, date certain for third reading and action. Is that correct?
That's correct. Thank you.
Just action only, correct? Not?
Correct.
Action only, third reading. Any comments or questions on that? Okay, seeing none, please call a roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
Okay. That finishes our regular meeting, and now we're in the public comments section. So anyone wishing to address the council on a matter that's not on this agenda nor plan to appear on a future agenda may do so at this open-mic session. Individuals are allowed a total of five minutes to speak on regardless the number of topics. For the month of March, our open mic is March 8 and March 29. So those who would like to come forward, like, come up at one at a time? State your name.
All right. I don't know if I can put that there or not, but these are for you. So my name is Bob, I'm vaccinated, by the way, so, okay if I take the mask off? So my name is Bob Rauner, R-A-U-N-E-R, a local physician, and I'm actually here today just to say thank you. So I think it's important for you guys to hear that. I know it's been a hard year for all of you. It's been a hard year to be an elected official. I know you've had, taken a lot of flak for things, and I want to show you the results of your work. And so what this is, if you want to take a look at it, but it's up on the screen, this is the mortality rate for various communities. The bottom line is Lincoln Lancaster County. The rest are comparisons to Omaha Metro area, other regions, Nebraska, Iowa, and South Dakota. And if you do the math, our community has 100 to 450 fewer deaths than you would have expected had we been, taken their path. And so I want you guys to know that all the work that you did, there's hundreds of Lincolnites are alive today because of what you've done. And so I think it's important that you understand that. We took a harder, but evidence-based path, and it worked. The other thing is it didn't just save lives. So in my day job, we manage multiple insurance contracts. One of them is Medicare, and Medicare sends us this last quarter healthcare costs, both with and without coronavirus. And if you look at the cost of our 12,500 Medicare patients, it was $3 million less than other areas in the country. So if you extrapolate that to other networks, Brian, CHI, other insurers, not only did we save lives, we saved tens of million dollars in healthcare costs. And on top of that, we did that while maintaining a 3% unemployment rate. So I think it's important for you guys to know that, and I've printed out that graph, and hopefully that provides you some motivation when things get tough, which I'm sure they will, because we're not out of this yet. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rauner. Appreciate it. Yes, Jane?
Dr. Rauner, could you talk a little bit about the variant that is in our state already and some of what other states are doing by prematurely dismissing some of the restrictions or safety guidelines in place?
Yeah. There are four main variants we're worried about right now. Two of them are already in Nebraska. They've already been confirmed. There was a Health Action Network announcement from the state last week on that. The two that are already here, one is the B117 variant that was first described in the United Kingdom. There's also a second group of variants that are very similar, first described in California that people haven't picked up on the press. Both of those do not appear to evade the vaccine, which is good, but they are more infectious. So the things we've been doing so far with masks and distancing may not be as effective. We have to do more. So, for example, putting on a better-fitting mask as opposed to the homemade mask with no nose pinch, for example. The two most worrisome ones are the ones, the P1 in Brazil, which Manaus thought they hurt community and found out, uh-uh, the second round was even worse. South Africa is another one. Those, not only more infectious, they may actually be more likely to kill you. Thankfully, those are not in Nebraska yet, but the other two are already here, so.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, Councilperson Ward?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dr. Rauner, thank you so much for being here, and thank you for your supportive and encouraging words. I know that, I for one, really appreciate that. And thank you for your service on the Lincoln Board of Education. That is appreciated as well. We all know you're a public health expert in this city, so I want to ask you, is there anything else we as a council, we as city government, elected public officials should and could be doing as we climb our way out of this pandemic? What else can we be doing?
I think the biggest thing is, just like I used in last week's update, we're on the red zone, but we haven't scored yet, so don't give up right now. It takes six weeks from the first shot to full immunity, and we haven't vaccinated enough people yet, so we still need the masks in place until we get there. So we're really on the cusp of literally scoring and winning the game, but not if we fumble it on the five-yard line, and that's my biggest worry. Another way I explain it is like the game when I played with a kid called Chutes and Ladders, where you went way up and then you went way down. Well, that was just a roll of the dice, but we have more than a roll of dice. We can choose to continue the masks for another month or two and watch the numbers and respond to the numbers, not hype. We've not hit hurt humidity yet. If we had, we'd lower, but we plateaued for the last three to four weeks, so we haven't continued to drop. If we ever heard humidity, we'd still be dropping, but we're not. So I think what you have is some people letting down their guard, some vaccinated, and they're offsetting each other. And if those variants sneak in, we could be having a problem. And so it's another month or two. We could, we're literally on the cusp of getting it right, and so understanding that you can't give up prematurely.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Councilperson Raybold?
Yes, Dr. Rauner, I have another question, because I forgot that you are on the school board. And I know as a community, we are so fortunate, so very fortunate to have our public schools open and operating. Is there anything else the schools should be doing to better prepare for the variant that might be coming, or are they doing everything they can? I know that there's been a few rates of positivity rate from some of the teachers and some of the students, but what other things should they be implementing so that we can keep our kids in school and we can have almost regular school seasons in the fall of, or August of 2021?
Well, I think we've done a lot of things in the schools, so almost with a very few exceptions, everybody's got a mask in on our schools, and so that's really important. We limited our capacity to reduce the risk. We're bringing it back up in high school as we feel safe. We're running numbers, but our risk parallels the community's risk. So if the community doesn't do its job, there's only so much we can do. And again, we watch those numbers. My biggest thing, I hope honestly from my side, is we get access to another round of testing, which like we did a few weeks ago, which was nice because it showed exactly what the university showed. So that was nice to confirm. And honestly, one of our best assets right now is that the link, the University of Nebraska at Lincoln, their randomized testing and surveillance, I think, is one of, is the best in the state. So we can use them as sort of the canary in the coalmine to tell us if something does leak, so they may see it first. And so I literally get up every morning and I click on the UNL dashboard to see what their numbers are, because their numbers, our numbers will probably parallel theirs. Also, if it's like Manaus, Brazil, it was six to seven months after the first outbreak that their second outbreak came, while their big outbreak happened when they came back in Greecrow and all that, August, September, were about that time. So they will be the first ones potentially to let us know. So I think what we do is surveillance testing, and the risk that the community has, that's our risk, too. Thankfully, we're starting to vaccinate teachers now, too, so that also helps us a bit. So, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Could you hand those to the clerk, and then she can hand them out to us?
Sure. I wasn't sure if we could get it to you.
There you go. Thank you, Dr. Rauner.
You're welcome.
Who else would like to come forward to speak at this time? Is it Dr. Rice?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Dr. Don Rice, R-I-C-E. I'm the owner and operator of the Urgent Care Clinic of Lincoln, which has been frontline COVID since this all started. I also wanted to bring a few comments along with my colleague, Dr. Rauner. Author C.S. Lewis described true leadership as having the courage to be the first into battle and the last to retreat. Regarding the mask mandate, I'm here today with Dr. Rauner to also thank you for being true leaders. As a physician and scientist, I remain like-minded with Dr. Rauner, who has shown you solid data in how your leadership decisions saved lives, kept businesses open, and kept people employed. I will always remember where I was and what I was doing last July when some of you called me and asked me questions about my observations as a frontline COVID worker. You listened to me, and you were candid about your concerns in mandating something like a mask mandate. When I was in residency, one of my toughest attending physicians told me that laws are only made for people without a moral compass. Over time, I realized the truth of what he had said. As I worked with tens of thousands of patients this last year, I can absolutely say that based on the moral compass of humanity as a whole, had you not stood firm on this, the death toll would have been much higher. had you not stood firm on this, the death toll would have been much higher. I know for a while you had concerns. Gubernatorial pressure, the cries of the anti-mask followers, and other insanities may have given you pause to consider if you were doing the right thing. I needed to let you know that you did the right thing. Although I worked as a frontline physician with direct contact to COVID patients every single day for nearly a year, and can say that I'm now vaccinated, the pandemic took a very painful and personal toll on myself. In another state, my father lived in a large county with a mask mandate. However, due to massive pressure from the anti-mask followers, there was no enforcement of the mandate. My father was in a public building, and despite following all of my instructions, was forced to sit in a public hallway for hours while patients known to have COVID walked by him without masks. Two weeks later, like clockwork, he began running fevers from COVID. Three days before Christmas, on the day that I received my first vaccine, he died. 24 hours later, one of my best friends here in Lincoln also died from COVID. As true leaders, you had, no, you have a duty to protect the vulnerable from being culled by foolishness. So, on behalf of the hundreds who don't even realize that they're alive today because of you, I want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you, Dr. Rice. Any other questions for Dr. Rice? Okay, thank you for coming down. Appreciate it. Who else would like to come forward to speak at open mic? Is there anybody else?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Samuel Lyon, Lincoln, Nebraska. I found it interesting that there was no questions about mental health to the two physicians that spoke here, as if that is not a concern or totally unanticipated, potentially harmful effect that will be impacting our lives and our children's lives, has impacted our parents' and grandparents' lives already. The physician did say that he believes that, I assume the DHMs have reduced Lincoln's mortality rate for, based on COVID-related deaths by a factor related to other cities in Nebraska. But he didn't mention any, anything about deaths related to the steps that have been taken. How many, how many people in facilities and nursing homes have died due to loneliness? How many have died due to the isolation that they felt? Many not mentally strong, some with dementia, and just unable to comprehend why they don't see their family anymore. Were those the right steps? Were those the wrong steps? Only time will tell. Our children also being, being forced as guinea pigs and into experimental studies. This is an experimental study. We think that we know what the effects are of the study. We think that it will help, but the side effects, we do not know. Now, for me, I'm nearly 40. It's a blip on the radar for me this last year. But our children, who are three, four, five, six years old, as they reflect on the reality of their life, the last 357 days could be all that they remember, could be all that they know. Just like any medical intervention that you have, the longer you keep it, the longer you have it, the longer the side effects will remain. Some children break their leg, and they put a cast on their leg, and they walk with a limp while they have their cast. Even after that cast is removed, they walk with a limp. Sometimes, just temporarily, but sometimes that limp stays for an extended period of time. And the longer that cast is on their leg, the longer the effects, the side effects of that medical intervention, remain. So, I thank the doctors for speaking on the prescription, right? That they gave us, you should do this, you should take this prescription. I wish it wasn't forced on the public. I think that when a government forces the public into an experimental study, it's a bad thing, in general. And I hope that our children bounce back from this quickly. I hope to bounce back from it quickly, myself. But I think that is something that's not being addressed. Certainly, the two physicians here spoke, didn't speak of the side effects at all, as if they weren't even, as if they weren't even a possibility in their mind. Informed consent is, informed consent is paramount in the medical industry. The two physicians that preceded me spoke not of informed consent, but praised you for forcing the medical intervention on the public. And that, to me, is concerning. It may be that the DHM helped. It may be that it brought down mortality rates. Time will tell. But also, it may be that we've really screwed up our kids. It could be. We don't know. Hopefully not. Hopefully, they'll bounce back. Kids are resilient. But as most therapists will tell you, when people come to them, one of the first things that they have to do is go back into their childhood and address some of the hurts, some of the wrongs that happened to them when they were children. And so, I hope and pray that that is not the case for our children over the past year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lyons. Is there anybody else that'd like to come forward and speak this afternoon?
Good afternoon. My name is Zalena Newman, 5610 Hunts Drive. As I mentioned earlier, my name is Dr. Newman, Dr. Zalena Newman. I'm a conservative independent candidate, running for one of the three seats in the upcoming city election, city council election. I compose a challenge before you. I'm a seeker of information, so when I decided to run for a spot in this leadership body, I started researching. I wanted to make sure that I embodied what a city council person should be. I wanted to make sure that I was able to be what people needed. I was looking through the roles and responsibilities of the city council, and I noted a couple of important bullets. One, this is a body with which all legislative powers are vested. And two, it's a forum for citizens to speak on issues of importance to them. As I watched some of the meetings, I noticed defensiveness and at times combativeness. My background is psychology, and I have seen firsthand, and through personal experiences in 2020, how last year has brought up some difficult issues. You are in a leadership position, and people look up to you. They are looking to you for guidance. I urge you to take yourself out of the leader role when people are in front of you and put yourself into the community role. If you were in this position and were passionate about a topic, how would you act, and what would you feel? I would implore you to read through all of those functions again to remind yourself what it is that you were elected to do. I know it's challenging at times, but people come to you sometimes as a last resort, when everything they have tried has not worked. A cry of help and a way to be heard. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Newman. Any questions? Thank you for coming down. Anybody else like to come forward and speak?
Candy Turner, Lincoln, Nebraska. I've always held political views and opinions. I've never felt that I was called to run for office. Didn't think it was needed. I did my civic duty. I researched all of my issues. I researched the candidates, and then I voted accordingly. Sometimes, people that were in office had the same values. Sometimes, they didn't. That's just how it is. Over the years, I have become a firm believer in the adage that politicians in diapers have fundamentally become the same, and they should be changed accordingly. With that visual in mind, I'm here to address what I saw happen in these chambers on February 22. Six minutes into public comment began what I can only describe as a childish tantrum by my councilwoman, Jane Raybald. Online, I watched in disgust as she attempted to take her toys and go home, fully willing to silence the voice of every citizen in the hall who came to speak that day, by ending the meeting immediately. Then, my disgust grew as she was joined by a councilwoman, Ward, who flat-out lied about which subjects could be addressed during public comment. The rules state, anyone wishing to address the council on a matter not on this agenda and not planned to appear on a future agenda may do so at the open microphone section. Your lie, Tammy Ward, is when you told Mr. Lyon, and I'm quoting you, "It's a point of order, Mr. Lyon, because the item you are referencing has been on a previous agenda, so you cannot discuss it." That's absurd. Why were you too self vehemently opposed to hearing opinions on subjects which were not on the agenda, but vaguely related? Just previous week, Jane, you told that same man he could speak on the emergency declaration of the governor. But I have my suspicions that because the topic contained the words "emergency" and the word "declaration," it would probably have earned a very hearty point of order. Councilwoman Ward, are your decisions on the matter related to the fact that a half a million dollars in COVID relief funding was just given to an organization that you sit on a tri-chair with the wife of the mayor's campaign treasurer? That organization, which gets their funding from a nonprofit with over 149.5 million in reported assets and happens to have the mayor onboard? I find it appropriate that the seats in this council chamber are covered in trash bags, because that is obviously what you think of us, commenters. Trash. These meetings are not like traffic court, where everyone just wants to get their own part done and take off. The decisions made in this room affect all of us, and we have every right to be here in full capacity for the entirety of the meeting. And Jane, your comment on March 1 in the director's meeting, where you said that people only needed to be present for their personal agenda item, quote, "so that people are not overstaying their welcome," is reprehensible. Speaking of that director's meeting on March 1, why did it take this council 350 days to start asking the basic questions about who has the power to do what? And if maybe we needed to rescind some of those measures? 350 days with Chicken Little running through the town saying, "Sky is falling." Sky is not falling, and there's work that needs to be done. Has anyone addressed the issues of corruption in the purchasing department with regards to the towing contract yet? I was brought before this council twice in the last month and a half. Has anyone made steps to free Ernest Jackson? He's been sitting in prison for over a year, I believe, after this brought that to your attention last summer. How many of your constituents have been the victim of a rising crime because our law enforcement officials were told not to arrest criminals unless they were immediate threat to someone? Had that happened to me? How many of your constituents were evicted into the snow last month? How many of your constituents relied on food bank last month? How many of your constituents closed the doors of their small businesses forever within this last year? If those are questions that you struggle to find the answer for and that you don't know, I don't know how you even have the audacity to sit in those seats.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to come forward to speak today? Going once? Going twice? Yes, Councilperson Raybald.
Mr. Chair, in light of the fact that our colleague is not here today, I would make the motion to adjourn and say to all women around the globe, Happy International Women's Day, and my sisters on the planet. I move we adjourn.
Been moved in second by Councilperson Ward, that we adjourn. Please call the roll.
Ward?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Cho?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Raybald?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
We stand adjourned.